Good evening. It is a beautiful day, isn't it? Today in Canyon City, I love it. It's a good night to have a regular city council meeting. This is March 15th, 2021, and I would like to call this meeting to order, please.
Councilmember Dennehy.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Harkes.
Here.
Councilmember Reed, absent. Councilmember B Smith, absent. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here. Is Doug Fortner here? Let's all rise for prayer from Doug Fortner from Grace Family Church, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to be with you tonight. Let me open with a word of prayer. Father God, we just come before you this evening. We thank you that you have given us again this day such a beautiful day upon Fremont County and Canyon City here. God, I just ask for your graces upon the meeting again tonight. Each council member in the decisions that they make, Father God, we thank you for their investment into the community, into the lives of people that live here, and so I just pray your blessing upon them. Father God, again, we just lift up to you the family of Jim Meisner and your peace, your comfort into the hearts of his family members and to his wife, Jolene. God, I pray just a special measure of grace upon them. Let us all, Lord, just look to you in faith through Jesus, Lord, the hope that you bring to us in this life and in the next. So I pray, Lord, for just us to carry on as citizens under your watch. We pray in Christ's name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I don't see any citizens' requests to speak to council today.
The two are on the list. I haven't listed on the list, sorry.
Thank you for your prayer. That was beautiful. Well, that's on the agenda, though, right?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll have, we'll wait and do those on the agenda item. Otherwise, any council member announcements? I think we must, we do have a meeting Wednesday. How many are you going to be in town, Dolly? Yeah, okay. I will be gone. Ryan will be gone, but Rick is in charge. So I'll watch it later. Because I've been looking forward to this topic, actually, for quite a while.
All right.
It's on what you've been doing with economic development and what's been going on, right?
That's correct, yep. Yep. The two of us.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
So I had a little pamphlet prepared, and I left it on my desk at work of an announcement I wanted to make, and it was just reminding folks that we have, let me scroll to it, an e-commerce-for-your-small-business seminar coming up, a four-part series on laying the groundwork for a successful pivot to digital marketing, social media and e-commerce platform. More details are available at Canyon City, Colorado government page on Facebook.
Thank you for that reminder. It's an exciting opportunity.
It really is.
Yeah, and when we went and talked to a lot of our small businesses, they said that was one of their gaps. Do you want to expound on that a little bit, Rick?
Yeah, this is a partnership between us and SBDC in the chamber to allow, to actually provide some training for e-commerce. It was a big challenge during COVID in particular. Some of our businesses just didn't have an e-commerce ability. It's very complicated to set up, so this is working with SBDC and a couple of consultants to provide some e-commerce training, and then a number of businesses will have an opportunity to receive a scholarship to generate some e-commerce website or whatever, whatever they really need. It's going to be tailored to each of the businesses that earns a scholarship, so it's coming up pretty quickly, came together pretty quickly, and it's been successful in, I want to say, southwest Colorado as well. So we're looking forward to it. Should be a good, a good thing.
And it looks like it's starting soon, March 23rd.
Yeah, very quickly. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you for pointing that out. Any other announcements?
I would just like to just throw out a quick thank you for these beautiful St. Patrick's Day decorations. That touches me personally, but thank you. They look great up here.
It's nice to be festive and fun. I would like to move on to our proclamation, and that's designated April, designating April 2021 as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month. Is there anyone in the audience to represent child abuse awareness? All right, then we're going, if, if it's okay, is it right if we start on this end and we each read, whereas, and we'll just work our way down? This is Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month, April 2021.
Whereas, children are key to Canyon City's future success, prosperity, and quality of life. While children are our most precious resource, they are also our most vulnerable, and?
Whereas, children have the right to thrive, learn, and grow to their full potential, and?
Whereas, the prevention of child abuse and neglect strengthens Canyon City's families and ensures the opportunity for children to develop in healthy, trusting families, schools, and neighborhoods, and where that consequently builds the foundation of our city and society, and?
Whereas, we must come together as partners to keep children safe, ensure that the voices of our children are heard by all, and extend a helping hand to children and families in need, and?
Whereas, each of us plays a role in the prevention of child abuse and neglect. We encourage everyone concerned about the safety and well-being of any child to report to the Fremont County Department of Human Services or to 1-844-CO-4-KIDS.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that April 2021 is hereby designated as Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month.
Dated this 15th day of March 2021. All right, we'll now move on to our consent agenda. We'll turn the time over to Administrator Ryan Stevens.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Item 8A is to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting on March 1st, the special city council meeting with the Planning Commission on February 24th, and the general government meeting on March 3rd. 8B appoints Carol McNew to the Historic Preservation Committee as an alternate member. 8C awards bid 2321 to Pate Construction, Colorado, with a contingency of 10% of $147,921.90 for a not-to-exceed amount of $1,627,140.90. That is for the Orchard Avenue 2A project. 8D awards bid 1421 police patrol vehicles to Daniel's Long Chevrolet of Colorado Springs in an amount not to, an amount of $339,954.15 plus a 3% contingency for a not-to-exceed amount of $350,152.15. 8E authorizes the mayor to sign a water service contract for Solok 799 Evelyn Drive. And 8F is to receive and file a list of bills.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
So just a few questions on the 2A, Canyon City 2A Orchard Avenue. Did we consider the local percentage, or it's not percentage, is it $10,000?
It's, yeah, it's 5% up to, I think, $10,000.
Up to $10,000, and that was considered? These bids are very close, that's why I asked.
Yeah, it, yeah, in bids this large, that local preference doesn't usually kick in because there, there's a dollar cap on it.
Okay.
But, but I believe Pate Construction's out of Pueblo West, so they are fairly local as well.
Yeah, I saw that. Okay, and then on the police patrol vehicles, what is the, what is the local discount for that one? You said the term, I can't think of what it's called.
The preference.
Yeah, local preference.
Yep. Jim, do you want to come up and talk about the local preference? While Jim's coming up with this one, there, there are other factors involved which has to do with, with timing and especially the purchase of that many vehicles. We've had, we've had some issues in the past with receiving those vehicles in a timely fashion, and going, going this route will certainly help us expedite that process.
Okay.
It was really a matter of, it was real close on the 5%, probably 4.9%, but the availability was the real factor here with Daniel's Long. They already had some ordered that will fit our specifications, where the order deadline got moved up from January 22nd to December 28th, so we had to move quick to get them ordered, and otherwise, we'd had to wait till late May to get them ordered. We wouldn't get them until the following year. But the way we're financing them now, we should be able to get the orders in before the first of the year from now on, and I think it will be a lot easier for the local dealer to, that we'll be able to get them a better shot at it.
Okay, so these vehicles have already been ordered and purchased?
No.
Not yet.
We, we just had to put a letter of intent in so that they could get them ordered. Otherwise, once the cutoff date comes, which they moved it up to December 28th.
Yeah.
Then you can't order them. You have to wait till the 2022 models, and you can't start ordering those until May, and then it's going to be late October, November, if we get them this year, and by the time they're outfitted, it'd be probably first part of 2022, maybe as late as March before we get any, and so we wouldn't have any vehicles this year.
And then how long will it take to have the vehicles fitted to their specifications?
Once, once they start arriving, the outfitting usually takes about six weeks.
Okay.
So with Daniel's Long, with them already having some in the pipeline, we're hoping to get some on the ground by probably early May to June, and then a few of the other ones might come in a little bit later, but they, they'll kind of be staggered instead of all coming in late in the year.
Okay, those are going to be some nice cruisers.
Yeah, they're.
I was disappointed we didn't see a unmarked minivan on the list. And then I had, thank you, Jim, so much.
Hang on, Jim. I just have a quick question. With this state, do you mind if I jump in? I apologize.
No, I have one more question, but when you're finished.
I had one for Jim while he's standing here. Is that okay? I didn't want to seem, I didn't want to, I didn't want to see you go sit down, is all I was saying. Do we ever look at out-of-state purchases, or does this have to be an in-state purchase? The only reason I ask this is because I do know of two other police agencies that go out-of-state for their vehicles.
We're actually going to start putting them on BidNet as well. The, the state bid has always been where we've gone because it's already a competitive bid, so then we, we get the competitive bid from the state bid, and then we give the local vendor a chance to, to meet it. We also are doing BidNet now on a lot of our bids, so we'll probably be putting it on BidNet, and then that'll be a nationwide bid there.
Okay.
So that's what we're intending to do this year.
Okay, thank you.
And Councilmember Dennis, Dennehy, to answer your question, there is no requirement that it be in-state. There's actually other co-ops out-of-state that will, will likely bid on BidNet who do the same thing that the state bid does on a much larger scale.
Thank you.
Yeah, Sourcewell is one of those. That's how we got the VAC truck, was a Sourcewell contract, and those are already competitively bid, so you can kind of pick the one you want, and then it, it's all on a competitive contract. So that's, that's kind of the way we've been trying to go.
I'm so sorry about that. Still Christmas for me. It did snow this weekend, so it counts. We'll go back to Councilmember Gonzalez.
I just had one more question on the detailed purchase of card dispersments. I noticed that there were three different vendors used to purchase uniforms. One was Richardson's, I've never heard of them before, a, a small amount, and then Joseph A. Banks, and then Amazon.
And Billups?
Billups?
I have, that's beautiful.
I didn't see that one.
Right here.
With a B? Oh, Dillard's, yeah, and Dillard's, yeah.
And some, some of those are, you know, the small amounts, we, we have allowances, and their reimbursements, so.
Oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
So they, they were probably something that was purchased by employee, and they submitted a receipt for reimbursement.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ryan, I've got actually several questions. Number one, we're paying the city of La Junta a copyright license fee, that's on the first page, about a little more than a third of the way down. Copyright license renewal for 275 bucks.
Yeah, I would have to look into that one. I don't know off the top of my head what, what that one is.
Okay, thank you.
I would imagine it has something to do with the museum, but I, I double-checked for, for you.
Thank you very much. The, I also note that Kahuna Ventures is doing electrical work for us, that's our motor control center, I think, upgrade.
It's the, yeah, the high-head and low-head pump stations.
And it would be nice to hear about that at some point, at the appropriate point. And then I noticed that we bought two trailers, one of them is a, is a replacement trailer for the wreck, is that right?
That's correct.
And the second one was just one that was needed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then also on that first page, to point and pay, there's credit card fees of over $8,000. Those are fees?
Yeah, point and pay is the, the vendor that we use for water paying, or water billing, and yes.
For water billings. Gotcha, right, thank you, thank you for that. And then I noticed that scattered throughout here, and I won't point out each one, but there were lots of things like windshield washer fluid purchase, cellphone charger purchase, and things like that, from some of our local Quick Stop stores, Quick, Quick Stop type stores. The, don't we have a purchase contract where we purchase those things on a, at a, at a discount?
We, we typically use, try and utilize our, our purchasing power when we can. We, we have, you know, designated accounts with a lot of different vendors. For, you know, those particular instances, I, I would need to see what was going on. Sometimes when we get in a bind and we don't have something on, on the shelf, we have to run and purchase something from a local vendor.
Understand. Okay, and then the, on the, on the last page for Twin Enviro Landfill, there are some dump fees. Was that for the VAC truck, associated with the VAC truck, do you know?
Not off the top of my head. I could look into it and get back to you, see what that was specifically for.
Would that, would that be what we intend to do with the, when we get a load in the vacuum truck, is take it to one of the landfills? Is that what we would do?
No, we, we actually have a place up at the Ninth Street Shop where we're, where we're dumping our, you know, what they're picking up.
Thank you, and I noticed on here, there were some, there was a line item for some traffic signs, and I would just point out that, that this has come up at other communities where they had men-working signs, and some high school students pointed out to that particular council that it's not just men working necessarily, and so that council pledged to get rid of those signs and put, you know, work ahead, or, you know, shoulder work ahead, something like that, and I would recommend that, that you ask the appropriate questions to see that if, if, if we have any of those signs, that perhaps they should be replaced.
Okay, yeah, we, we can certainly look into that as well. I, I don't know that, you know, these signs were not for those particular types of signs, but yeah, that.
I just, it triggered me.
Your, your point is taken. Thank you, sir.
Jim Johnson's here, so he heard this, too.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, oh, Councilmember Dennehy.
And Ryan, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, some of our, I'm wondering, I was also just looking at this going down and looking at all the winches that were, but they're, they're all over the board where they're coming from. Is, is there any way that, and, and I don't know who's bottom, you know, and that's okay, but I'm just saying, you know, we have, we have them coming, I think, from, or we have them from Amazon, we have them from Parts Giant, we have them from Harbor Freight, we have them from Moto X Outlet, you know. I'm just, I'm just kind of wondering, can we, can we try to narrow that down, or is there a reason why we're going all over the place? I mean, I understand some places don't carry those parts, but usually on the ATV stuff like that, that's pretty standard in, in most places now, and, and then the other reason, you know, just again, looking local, because I know that we do have a place that, that carries almost everything that I've seen listed here, but then again, on price, I do understand that, but I guess I'm saying, you know, it's all over the board, should we, is it because they're pricing it out, or?
All availability.
All availability?
Yeah, we were trying to get those, those five, those ATVs, those four, and we got everything that Harbor Freight had down here, and we got the best price.
Okay. Okay, all right, thanks, Bob.
So sometimes, yeah, we, we have projects like that, and it's, you know, last-minute things, or, you know, whether something's, you know, occurring, there's typically special circumstances when you see, you know, transactions across the board like that. We do have a purchasing agent, and we, we try to run everything through purchasing, so we are getting those volume discounts when we can.
All right, thank you, council. We'd like to entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda and agenda. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Madam Mayor and council, I've moved that we approve the agenda and the consent agenda for our regular city council meeting, March 15th.
Any discussion?
Second.
There's been a second and a motion, any discussion? And I'll call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Harkes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
All right, thank you, council. Ryan, would you like to give an administrator's report?
Sure. You know, you, you have the written report in front of you. As it states, you know, we moved the state collect at, at the end of last year, and that, that began in January. We saw those January numbers come in. This first month, it looks like we were, collected 139,000 this year over last year, so the, the team just got trained on the state system, so we're going to be analyzing that and making sure that there's, you know, we're picking up revenue from the correct places and making sure that all that information's correct, but if that is an indication of, you know, where state collected's gone, that's, that's a very positive indication, so we'll, we'll continue to, to monitor that and be cautiously optimistic about the future for that revenue. You know, Parks and Water Department doing their routine maintenance, got lots of, lots of projects going on. The Water Department, of course, is preparing for, has been doing work along Orchard, preparing for the 2A work. And then from an economic development standpoint, continue to be busy both on the grant side as well as economic development, working on with the Main Street program, and lots of, lots of commercial activity going on right now, so we're continuing to, to, you know, meet with those, those developers and talk to them about the opportunities and the projects they're bringing forward and just building that pipeline. So it's, it's very positive. I'm sure Rick will be giving council a full update on Wednesday of everything that's going on there. And of course, House Soul Levine and the Comprehensive Plan and Code Rewrite, we had a joint meeting last week, where we'll be submitting some calendar invites to, or, you know, proposed calendar to council and Planning Commission here probably later this week. There's, there's a lot of joint sessions that are going to be coming up for us to meet our deadline, so very excited about the, the Code Rewrite and the Comp Plan chapters to come. We've got Transportation Plan and Economic Development Plans we'll be seeing here in the next, in the next couple sessions, so we'll, we'll submit that calendar, so you guys can let us know whether or not you have any avail, you know, any conflicts with those specific dates.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez?
One question and one comment. Have we determined a system on figuring out how we're going to calculate our online sales tax revenue? Is there something in the works?
Yeah, with the, with the state system, you know, they, like I said, they had training last week on the state system, and we're hoping that through that, we'll be able to calculate how much of that revenue is coming from online sales.
Okay, good. And then just, I had somebody make a suggestion, I told him I'd pass it along. At the clock tower, I don't remember if this came up or not when Tom did his, his presentation, but somebody mentioned putting in an informational kiosk, or he had mentioned putting in an informational kiosk down there. I don't know if that was part of the plan or not, but.
Yeah, actually, when we did the sign, the new signs, we actually had some, I think there were some concepts for informational kiosks that we could put at the clock tower, but also scattered throughout downtown.
Great.
So, yeah, that's something that's contemplated, it's just a matter of funding and timing.
Also, it reminded me of the maps in Salida, that Salida uses. I'd love to see those down here, those.
Those are the pocket maps?
The pocket maps, they don't tear, they don't, you can't get them wet, they're fairly inexpensive, and they show you where you can eat, you know, dine, shop. That'd be great to put down there, too.
Awesome. Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Just to follow up on the sales tax, Ryan, one, one question that I would be interested in hearing an answer to, and it might be hard, we might have apples and oranges in the reports, but I would like to, to know the number of sales tax licenses the city has versus the number of sales tax licenses the state may be collecting on for us, if, if they have, if those numbers exist.
Yeah, we can look into that. I think we'll, we'll have a idea of number of filers, and we certainly have the historic information from before.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, council, thank you, Ryan. And we'll now move on to item number 10, and that is the Built for Zero funding request. I'd like to invite DeeDee Clements from Loews &amp; Fishes to come and address council, please.
Thank you for asking me to come here this evening to talk and, talk to you a little bit about Built for Zero. As many of you know, in October of 2019, Fremont was one of five counties selected by Kaiser Permanente to join the Built for Zero movement. Built for Zero is an initiative through Community Solutions, a nationwide nonprofit that works with communities to help them end homelessness. Community Solutions is currently working in 80 communities across the United States. Our focus in Fremont County has been our veteran and our chronic homelessness, and becoming a Built for Zero community has truly just been a game changer for us here in Fremont County in the past 18 months. And tonight, I just want to share with you just three of the big highlights that have been accomplished in the last 18 months because of Built for Zero. Today, we now have a real-time, by-name list of everyone who's experiencing homelessness in our community. Instead of having to rely on estimates of the number of people who are experiencing homelessness- homelessness, we know that tonight, there are 182 individuals who are experiencing homelessness in Fremont County. Three of them are veterans, 83 of them are considered chronic, meaning they've been homeless a year or longer, and 96 are considered non-chronic. The other big thing that's happened is case conferencing. Case conferencing is now being conducted weekly for our veterans and twice a month for our chronic homeless households. Case conferencing is where community partners come together and they discuss each veteran and chronic individual by name and determine what the next step is to get that person into housing. Through case conferencing efforts, 299 individuals have found home, have found housing here in Fremont County in the last 18 months. The last one I want to mention is we now have organized outreach that's being conducted at least twice a week. Over 15 volunteers and five different agencies are going out and meeting with our neighbors who are living on the streets. Volunteers are able to connect them to folks with various assistance programs, housing resources, and provide some basic needs to them. Our goal is, is that very soon, there will be no veterans who are experiencing homelessness in Fremont County, and that by July 2022, we will have reduced the number of chronic individuals who are homeless in our community to as close to zero as possible. Because of the work that has been accomplished, we were awarded, we being Fremont County, was awarded $50,000 capacity grant from the Colorado Health Foundation. This grant is a 24-month grant that runs from February 2021 to March, or excuse me, January 2023. When the BFC Improvement Team got together to discuss how they could best use these funds, and we knew that our goal was to reach, to reduce the number of individuals who are experiencing chronic homelessness to as close to zero as possible by next summer, we knew that we needed to hire someone who would be able to commit 100% of time, 100% of their time towards this effort. This led to us hiring a coordinated entry manager. Recently, we received a $10,000 match from Fremont County to support this coordinated entry position. Tonight, I'm here to ask the council if they would consider also a $10,000 match to support this position. Thank you for giving me this time, and I'll answer any questions that you have.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Hi, DeeDee, thanks for being here. Great work. I remember the numbers a couple of years ago and they're drastically lower than they were. So my question is, is this position only paying $20,000 a year?
No, no, this position is actually a $47,000 position a year. So the grant is for 50. We got 10 from the county, so that brings it to 60, and then we're hoping we'll get another 10 here. And then the hope is, is that 2021, we may go back to the county and then we'll maybe come back to the city to see if they would also do another $10,000 match, and then Loews &amp; Fishes Ministries will cover the difference.
Okay, and then the intended use for the rest of the money that came from the grant?
Yeah, so what we've discovered with just the technical assistance that we've been receiving from Community Solutions, is a lot of communities have what they call the live experience person. So this would be a consultant with someone who was previously homeless, like recently previously homeless. They would look at our policy procedures, they'd go with us out on outreach. This person would probably maybe work 20 hours, or we would use 20 hours of a consulting times a month. We haven't hired this position, but that would be where the extra funds would go, is to cover that person's salary.
Thank you.
Consulting fees, I should say.
Yeah.
Any other questions from council? I do feel like I need to give a lot of praise to DeeDee and the entire Built for Zero team. They've put Canyon City on the map for being able to address homelessness in an effective way. I mean, thank goodness for that Kaiser Permanente scholarship for Built for Zero. It completely changed the way we addressed homelessness. And your team is so dedicated. Every now and then I get to sit on their committee meetings and they're passionate, they're hardworking, they celebrate the opportunities they have to get the homeless families to find housing, and you're making a really big difference in our community and I really, really appreciate it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The one thing I didn't mention is that we actually, again, because of the work that's been done, Colorado Health Foundation has actually paid for our subscription. It's a $10,000 annual subscription to have Community Solutions work with us. They've actually paid for that for the next five years, so we really can make a difference here in our community.
That's really great news.
Yeah.
And it's because of your relationship with the Community Solutions that we were able to get this grant, and many other grants, too. This is not just the only one, so... Councilmember Gonzalez?
I don't know why, this one is actually directed at Ryan, this question. So we have $10,000 left in our community agency funding. Have we had anyone else come forward asking for funding?
The only other one that came forward was Luke Javernik previously, and, you know, council had, you know, addressed that funding request, so no, we have not had anybody else.
And we did approve that funding, right?
The, for Luke. Yeah, it's approved pending his receiving the grant.
Okay, and was that $5,000?
So at that time, there was 15,000 available.
All right, so this would take the remaining of our community agency funding?
Correct.
And can I, DeeDee, I'm sorry, can I ask you, why did this come up now and not when we did our community agency funding a couple of months back?
Sure. At that time, we weren't aware of the Colorado Health Foundation grant, and so Loews &amp; Fishes made a decision at that time because we knew many nonprofits were struggling in our community not to even apply for the community funding for 2021, just because we were okay at the moment and we knew that many other nonprofits were struggling. We wrote a letter to that effect and I think we said we'll be back in 2022, but, yeah, but we weren't aware of this need at that time.
So with this funding, how close to zero do you think you could get?
Oh, I'm confident.
I know that's kind of a loaded question.
No, 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 that's, I think that's a great question. I know that we will reach, they have something called Functional Zero, that's the number that they use, and Functional Zero for Fremont County is three. So we've actually reached Functional Zero for our veteran population. We are the first county in the state of Colorado to do that. We're in the process of right now getting federal certification through the United States Interagency Council of Homelessness, and so we don't want to officially announce it until we have that because we want to be able to say we have this federal certification. For our chronic population, it's the same number, it would be three, and we are working really hard. I mean, like I said, 299 individuals in the last 18 months have found housing because of this effort, and so I don't know what the future holds, but I know that you have a team, as Mayor Ashley mentioned, that is committed to this cause, and a lot of folks, churches and businesses and just volunteers are just saying, you know what, we want to end this. And we all want our community to be safe. We know that our parks are being affected, we know that BLM land is being affected and all that, and the way we solve that, or one of the ways we solve that is to be able to find housing for folks, so we're working hard. So I, so, can't see into the future, but I would say, man, we are gonna come really close.
I don't doubt that.
Yeah.
You guys work hard, thank you.
Councilmember Hockes?
The one question I have is, I know all of these folks that you want to help, need to be helped and everything else, and I also realize that they're not all in one location, but just spread throughout of Fremont County. Have you made your presentation to the county with regards to having them provide you with some additional funds like you're requesting of us?
Yes, the Fremont County, Fremont County has already given us $10,000 of match towards this grant for 2020.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions or discussion from council? I'd like to call for a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request of $10,000 for Loews &amp; Fishes for the Built for funding request.
Second?
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion?
Yeah, the only thing that I would like, because it's more or less gonna pass, if you mentioned you might have to come back again or for another contribution down the roadway, I would just like to know as far as how you utilize, basically, if it's possible, our $10,000. So we have an idea, and so the citizens have an idea of, you know, where that money went. I know it's always gonna go to a good cause, but you know how some people talk about, and we've done that with our budget, discussing where there's 200, where there's 300, so it would be nice to know exactly where that money did go, should you have to come back for another request, and we hope you don't have to come back. We all realize the situations that are out there.
We can do that, Councilmember Hockes.
Any more discussion? Then I will call a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember B. Smith? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Hockes?
I didn't hear, but I'll say aye for me.
Mayor Potem Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council, I really appreciate your support for the Built for Zero team and keep going for it, you guys are awesome.
Thank you, thank you, council members.
And we'll now move to item number B, and that's introduction and adoption by title only of Resolution 6, Series of 2021, entitled Establishing the Canyon City Energy Franchise Committee. We will start with a report from our administrator and then we'll go to citizen comment.
City Council and Mayor, we had a general government meeting a couple of months back regarding this topic, and we took guidance from that, from that committee meeting to put together this resolution. Of course, you know, the backstory here is the franchise agreement with Black Hills Energy did not pass in November. We were asked to put together a energy committee to evaluate, you know, why the voters voted the way they did and look at possible alternatives, and this is the resolution before you to, for your consideration, to form that committee.
I'd like to invite now, first Emily Tracy, you'll have three minutes to address city council, and then Julie Holmes.
Hi, good evening. I just have a few questions, I don't know if they're more appropriate after councils discuss the resolution, or I could ask them now, whatever you prefer.
Go ahead and ask them now, so we know what kind of discussion we may need to have.
Okay, I'm looking at the actual resolution in item three, and this may be just a word choice, the second line in item three where it says designed by city council, is that designated?
I would say yes.
Okay, and then related to that, that a city council member would be chairing the committee, and then as the resolution spells out the membership, it mentions two Canyon City Council members, so is the chair one of those two, or is that in addition to the two?
Ryan, I was thinking that it was not a council member that was leading the committee. I figured that was gonna be you.
I'm actually not a member of the committee, I would be providing staff support, which is why.
Staff support for you, okay.
But to answer Emily's question, it would be two council members on the committee, total.
And one of them would then chair, as this has been.
And that's part of the Sunshine Act, that we only can have two council members together at one time unless we call a public meeting.
Right, well, I assume that these could be or would be open meetings, hopefully, but...
Well, I mean, they are open to the public, but...
Yeah, they would be open meetings, but it's about the requirement to post the meeting, so if we have more than two, then we have to post the meeting, but...
Right, yeah, I understand, I understand. So you haven't talked yet about the application process, who, the applications from the residents, businesses, Canyon Cities, Energy Future, who those applications would go to and what the deadline is for that?
So the applications will be sent to Cindy, and we usually give it about a month, I guess we can talk about that, three weeks to a month, depending what we decide, so it goes to Cindy, she makes copies of them, we create a meeting where we invite all the applicants to come and talk to city council and address city council, and then we will make a selection from there.
Okay, and so I missed, is that one month, or is there an actual date deadline at this point?
That's what we'll decide tonight.
Okay, and then, so then the city council meets, interviews, makes the decision then about the members?
And that's in a public meeting.
Right, right. And then, has there been a date set for the first meeting of the advisory committee?
No. I'm assuming we will decide that the day that we make the committee, but it would be timely, yeah.
Okay, I think that covered the questions that I have, thanks.
We'll now turn the time over to Julie Holmes, please.
Good evening. I have a question that I believe is for this gentleman here, it's an economic development question, is that correct?
That's who I am.
I'm interested in knowing where you are in your progress with the 13-acre Black Hills Energy site.
Would you like to comment on that one? We're still in, it's, we need to discuss this with Colorado legacy land, because as I understand it, the plan would be for Colorado legacy land, just as they're doing with Cotter, the Cotter uranium mine, they would take the land and do the assessment and potential cleanup before the city would take possession of it. And then, at that point, depending on the outcome, it would either be put out for an RFP to developers, or turned into whatever use we can do with that property, whether it be a park or open space or something like that.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to that still, so, you know, we have a master plan for along the river corridor and things that we'd like to see there, so we certainly want to move in that direction, but, you know, as far as taking ownership of the property, I think that's still up in the air.
Ownership by the city?
By the city or some other entity, somebody other than Black Hills.
Is it somebody other than Black Hills? Would Black Hills participate?
That's all part of the discussion.
There's a lot, like you said, there's a lot of moving parts to this right now, yeah. We need to have a meeting pretty soon with the parties to find out, we're trying to set up a meeting with the parties to find out where we stand.
And the parties are, I'm sorry to do this, but the parties are...
Black Hills Energy and Colorado Legacy Land. And the city.
And the city, any consultants?
Colorado Legacy Land.
Colorado Legacy Lands are the consultants?
Yeah, they would be the consultants. We haven't discussed that yet, I don't know.
I'm sorry, I missed that question.
Any former senators or anything like that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Any, okay. And is there a little more information, written information that you have from your office that I might see?
At this time, no, there's really not, it's all in negotiation at this point.
It's really in the hands of Black Hills still, it's in their Black Hills hands and it's gonna be that way for a while. We're having discussions with them and Colorado Legacy Lands, because there's some cleanup that will need to take place.
Oh, absolutely.
And so that's why there's a pause to see what that cleanup would be and what that would take for Black Hills to take care of that.
Yeah, well, and, so it's not an orphan site, right?
I can't designate it as anything right now.
Just a plain old brown field.
Right now, it's just a plain old brown field.
Plain old brown field.
Yeah.
It is not an orphan site, it has an owner.
Say again?
It is not an orphan site, it has an owner.
Yes, so it's not an orphan?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. You know, I'm the one that wants a map. You got a little better map for me?
I can get you a map.
That I can see with these little old eyes?
I can get you a map.
Okay, I'll stop by tomorrow.
Well, send me an email, I don't have one available for you yet, I have to order it.
Oh, come on, we don't want to do that.
Well, I just ordered from downstairs, it should be all right.
What's it cost?
Nothing.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. So we, we do have this resolution to form the advisory committee to the city council. Let's turn some time over to Councilmember Gonzalez. Do you have a, oh, maybe that's old?
No, it's, it's new, but there's some discussion that you could help with.
Yeah, I just say, yeah, and I think one of those discussions will be, you know, what the deadline is, and are we happy with the way we have it laid out and things like that, so. I'd like to hear from you. What do you have to say?
The only thing is, at this point, looking at this resolution, not, not thinking into the future quite yet about scheduling and, you know, selecting people, but in, so in, in where it says the committee will consist of up to nine members appointed by the city council. It'll be chaired by the coun, by a council member designated by the city council. The members of the committee will be composed of two, two, three? Is that what, does that mean two or three people? Okay. City business owners, Canyon City residents, and Energy Future members, and one Fremont County Commissioner, and two council members. I'm, my concern is that, and I don't know that it's as much of a concern as it is maybe just selecting individuals fairly, but I'd kind of like to see that these are not intermixed. So to, let me see. So the Canyon City business owners are not maybe part of the Energy Future members. Does that make sense? So that we're not overlapping and weighting it, so, so we get a biased vote and, you know, discussion? I don't know how we can make that possible.
Do we need to change the wording for that, or is that just the intent of council to make sure that there's representation for each?
All, yeah, all over the board, yeah. So people of different interest groups aren't, aren't outnumbered?
Yeah, and I, and I don't know that you can do that through the resolution. It's probably going to be through the interview process.
Okay.
And, and I remember that the business owners, that was so that even if you're not a resident of Canyon City, you could still serve on the committee because your business is in Canyon City and is affected by the electric rate. So that's something that we'll also need to have that discussion when we interview the candidates.
Okay, all right. That makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Hockes?
I'm going to make one comment, then I'm going to make a motion. Like Ryan said, the interview process is where we can eliminate the concerns that people have with regards to the overlapping in that. And then I want to make a res, Madam Mayor and members of council, on, on first read, I want a resolution number six, Series of 2021, titled Establishing the Canyon City Energy Franchise Committee, where the motion is passed.
The, I'd, I'd like to second that, but I'd like to offer an amendment, if you don't mind, Frank, and, and you can consider it. But, but what my amendment would be is that, is that we keep the nominations open for 30 days after first publication, that we instruct our city clerk to keep the nominations open.
I don't have a problem with that.
And I second that.
I'm against my original motion, okay? I want to add the fact that we have that held for 30 days so we can establish the committee.
So there's been a motion and a second to approve the ordinance as is, except for changing does it, designed to designated. And we'll have the application process open for 30 days from the time of publication. There's been a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll call for vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Appreciate that. And Zaneel, I will pre-thank you for the work that you're going to do to get the committee advertised and the applications ready for our next meeting in 30 days, it sounds like. We will, and thank you, Emily, for being here as well, and to Julie Holmes. We now have item number C, 315, for 315 Main Street and 316 Macon Avenue property. This is item I, introduction and adoption by title only Resolution Eight, Series of 2021, entitled The Resolution of the City of Council, of the City Council of Canyon City, Colorado, approving the purchase and sale agreement with Lawrence Tilly for the property located at 315 Main Street and 316 Macon Avenue, Canyon City, Colorado.
And we'll have an update from Rick.
Yeah, this is, this is the conversation we had in executive session a little while ago. This is a property that became available on Main Street several months ago, and it's a property that has been sitting there for a while, not purchased. This property also came up during, last year during the COVID time period, because when we were talking to businesses about what they needed, how we could help them with grant funding, some of the concerns of the neighboring business were talking about the structure of that building, and they thought it was dangerous, and they, they thought it was going to jeopardize their building. So it, it then, it was not available for sale at that point. It did become available for sale and sat on the market for a little while. And Tom and I decided to go look at it, our small business manager. We decided to take a look at it to see if maybe there was something we could promote, something we could do with it. The, it came to our attention that somebody else looked at the building as well and said it wasn't basically workable. It was, it needed to come down. So we took a look at it to see if that was the case. We toured it downstairs, upstairs, and determined that it's in very, very bad condition. The owner unfortunately knows it. He was, he was, he's been tied to that building since, I think he started as an employee at that laundromat when he was 15 years old, and he's 70 right now, so it's very, very emotional for him. He's, he's selling the building, understanding that it has some problems. It is, it is in very rough shape. The roof is in very rough shape. Some of the business, building, excuse me, some of the machinery that's in there, most of the machinery that's in there is still 1950s-era machinery that he was using, still functioning. Blew me away. It was just amazing to see that that machinery could still be working. Unfortunately, however, the building is just in very, very bad condition. The roof is in bad condition. Some of the built, some of the machines were actually under daylight. The floors are in very, very rough shape, so. We talked to Ryan about it and determined that this would be a very good opportunity, opportunity to expand parking downtown. It's a building that really needs to come down and probably will not be sellable. It's been operated as a laundromat, as a dry cleaner for decades, and has used at least three different kinds of chemicals in that dry cleaning process. That creates a significant EPA challenge, a cleanup challenge. So we, we discussed it with EPA. We discussed it with our Brownfield consultants, with the, the Fremont County Coalition Brownfield Grant, and, and with Ryan, and we determined to purchase, or at least make an attempt to purchase the property. We needed to take a look at it to see if we could clean it up, take the building down, and then convert it into parking. We are right now waiting for a Phase One analysis to be completed this Friday. Phased, and that's being done by Stan Tech, the company that did the Brownfield Coalition assessments. And that's the remaining funds from the Fremont Coalition grant. And we applied for a targeted Brownfield assessment grant from EPA to do a Phase Two analysis of that. The EPA analysis, the Phase Two, was delayed slightly just because of the age of the building and the number of different chemicals they used, likely used throughout that, throughout the years of its existence. So we are now waiting for Phase Two and Phase Two, excuse me, Phase One and Phase Two. And then after that, we will determine what the, basically will negotiate a purchase price. But it's not just the building itself. At 315 Main, he also owned 316 Macon, Macon Avenue behind it. The challenge we have with Macon, potential challenge we have with Macon, with the Macon Avenue property is that it was very customary for dry cleaners back in the early days of dry cleaning to dump chemicals out in, out back, so to speak. Whether it was out the back door, out in the back lot, or whatever the case may be, so. The building itself has a Phase One, the building, the parking lot has a Phase One and a Phase Two as well, so they'll both be going through assessments. The seller agreed to sell us the property, looking at a price of, the asking price for the building itself was $150,000. The asking price for the lot behind it was $43,000. So our purchase agreement is written up at those prices contingent on the Phase One and Phase Two analysis and potential costs of cleanup. So that's, that's where we are right now. They signed the, the purchase agreement last Friday, and now it's in our hands to take the next steps. Happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Sorry, I'm button happy, button happy tonight. So on the purchase and sale agreement, the one I have, I can't really read it. On A, it says where a seller owns the following real property located.
Right on the, you said letter A?
Uh-huh. Canyon City Lot Four plus that part Lot Five, 323 feet, lying Eli of a L and D.
That was copied word for word from the Fremont County Assessor's Office for a description of the property.
That's the legal description.
That's the legal description of the property.
The line drawn from, oh, now I see it. Real through center of wall of adobe block building. Okay. All right, as long as it's legal.
Yeah, the, the le, reading legal descriptions is an art.
Yeah, that, I read that and I went.
Yeah, another, a whole other language?
Yeah, it does. It is a whole other language. Okay.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of editorial comments. On the top of page two, earnest money is not capitalized where it is throughout the document. It's a defined term. It probably should be capitalized there. On page four, under 11D, it says seller has not received any notice of, of any violation of any applicable law, and I would recommend that we put in there or regulation, any applicable law or regulation. And then, then I have a couple of comments about the agreement itself. The agreement itself does not speak to the equipment contained in the building?
Uh, no, it does not.
Correct, it does not.
And so that, that's probably something that needs to be cured one way or another as to whether the equipment goes there, goes with the building or not, whether we expect the seller to remove the equipment, or whether that'll be part of our responsibility. And so that, to me, that's, that's a, that's a hanging question that probably needs to be, you know, I, I realize this, this is a sale and we want to move quickly here, but, but nonetheless, that's, that's a substantial point, a material point, it seems to me, that, that needs to be addressed in the agreement. And, and I would also ask, are there any chemicals stored on site?
I don't know the answer to that right now. We'll have to, I will check with our EPA.
We, we may find that out through the, through the Phase One, but I would recommend that that, that be treated similar to whatever, however, the equipment in the building is going to be treated. That that be spelled out in the agreement, whose responsibility any chemical stored on site might be.
I will discuss that with our attorneys.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One other thing I'm wondering about is, I can see the purchase price in that, and obviously there's going to be some price for getting a lot of these equipment out and that. But do we have any rough idea, and I know this is early, but it's still something that we should be considering, of the price of demolishing that building?
We don't have, we don't have a price on demolishing the building. The bigger question we were concerned about is the price of cleanup. Because it's possible if there's too much cleanup, we can't do anything with the building at all. And, and if that's the case, it's, there's, there probably would have to be a decision made what, what to do with that building. But yeah, we didn't, we did not discuss demolition.
Okay. I, I'm just, the one reason I ask that is just, you know, because if the city's going to be purchasing that, and then all of a sudden, you know, if that's a big ticket there for, you know, how much is this going to end up costing our taxpayers?
Understood.
Ryan, do you recall how much we spent on Constantino's? Because that was a really big building.
Where's that again?
Constantino's.
Oh, yeah. With Constantino, we gave him, I believe, 90 days to dispose, to dispose of all the material in there. And then if, if they didn't dispose of it within that 90-day period, I thought we had a clause in there that that would have some kind of adjustment with regards to the purchase price. And that's what I was going to mention. If, if it's possible, we can do the same thing with this. Allow them a certain amount of time to dispose of it themselves, and that, if they can. And then if they're not capable of doing that, it also gives us an opportunity to look at what the cost might be for us to dispose of it, and that could be part of the negotiation price of the final, final agreement. I'd hate for us to spend, you know, 190, I'm just going to exaggerate, but I hate for us to spend $193,000 for all of this and then find out it's going to cost us, you know, $80,000, $90,000 to get rid of everything, you know. So if we can put something in there in that same thing like we did with Constantino's, I, I think that would, you know, take care of, not all of it, but some of the problems.
Yeah, and, you know, what, what we have in this agreement is we, we do have the ability to go back and renegotiate based off of the EPA findings and, and the, what I would call anything over and above just normal demolition. So, you know, you know, if it's asbestos or any other hazardous materials, we, we could go back and we can renegotiate based off, based off of those facts, which is the same deal that we had with Constantino's. We, we adjusted that price based off of the asbestos and the asbestos abatement that came back on that property. Madam Mayor, I don't recall exactly what we paid to, to do the remediation and the demolition on, on Constantino's. It, it was less, I would say it was less than $75,000.
That's, yeah, that's what I was kind of thinking, and I didn't want to quote it, but I definitely remember thinking that there wasn't a sticker shock to it. It was definitely well worth getting that down, especially if it's dangerous. What's that? So basically, we're kind of getting two birds with one stone. We have a dilapidated building downtown that's dangerous. We have a desperate need by our business owners and downtown folks for parking, and that's the opportunity we have to take care of both of those with this opportunity. And the third block really needs some love. It's kind of their turn to have a little bit of attention. A private developer is probably never going to want to touch this building from the sounds of it.
Well, there's one, there's, there's a gentleman in town who wants to start a dry cleaning business. He comes from a family of dry cleaners.
Or here?
He is here. He is here.
Sure, we'll welcome you to come up and speak.
This is totally unexpected, but.
Did you have three minutes?
Three minutes, okay. So I do come from a long line of dry cleaners. My mom's still operating one in Arizona, and she's 80. And so we toured the building, and I went to Rick because I would like to establish a dry cleaning business. Here, a more modern one, less, no hazardous chemicals, all the good stuff that goes along with it. And he is correct. In the olden days, they would throw stuff out the back door. And tripercolithylene is the chemical used most common today, and it is, does affect groundwater, so it is an issue. As far as the building goes, I'm also a general contractor here in Canyon City. I have my own business there, too. And I looked at the building, and it is not safe, nor is it worth saving, period. The equipment in there is going to cost you an arm and a leg to get rid of. They have a boiler in there that is massive. And just to get it out of the building somehow is going to take some money, plus all their equipment is just junk. It, it's all trash. So to speak to that, you know, I was kind of excited to look at his equipment. Maybe there might be something I could purchase and stuff, but it, there's nothing worth salvaging in that building at all. And then I looked structurally and stuff, and even from my point of view, you're just going to spend half a million dollars just to structurally make that building sound, and then you've got all kinds of work after that to, to fix it. So I was happy to get an email from Rick saying, hey, I think we're going to tear it down and make parking out of it. And I said, great, great idea. So. So, yeah, I am still pursuing the, uh, dry cleaning business, we're still looking for property, Rick's given us some hand, I've got some great, uh, uh, input from the city, uh, from the people around, to talk to the fire department, stuff like that, so as far as the building goes, Rick's right on the money, and I think the city would make a a smart choice into turning it into parking down in that area. Um, it's, it's pretty dangerous inside there, I wouldn't even go upstairs myself, because it just looks like you would fall through the floor. Um, but yes, um, we're still in the process, I'm still waiting for quotes on equipment, but, uh, I think there's a good need for a good dry cleaner, I've been in it since I was sixteen also, off and on, you don't make any money working for your folks, so that's why I don't do it full-time, but I am a professional dry cleaner, I've been through school and everything else for that, so, based on that, you know, um, I'm really pleased that the city is backing me, you know, Rick and and Tom, and I've talked to, um, Ms. Olsh, and of course, the fire department and stuff, trying to get ahead of the game, and, uh, it's been well received, just trying to find a piece of property, though, that I can put a cleaning machine in, and by the way, we don't use, nowadays it's called wet cleaning, it's just water, so we don't use dry cleaning chemicals anymore, and so that won't be a hazard to Canyon City either, so.
Great, so first, I need to get your name for public record.
I'm sorry, my name is Jerry Little.
Jerry Little?
Yes.
Does he just need the name or address? Okay, and second, thank you for being here tonight, it was really nice to get, uh, outside opinion from both a dry cleaning and a contracting perspective.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, thanks, Rick.
Well, thanks for the surprise.
All right.
And good luck to you, we actually were all really sad when the dry cleaning business closed, because we don't have someone local doing it and keeping it here in town, and so we wish you the best of luck and hope that things turn out well for your endeavors.
Well, thank you.
Well, be sure to support you. Um, Ca- Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Um, Madam Mayor, I would, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Oh, sure.
Oh, regretfully, my motion is to table this until we can revise the, um, purchase and sale agreement to talk about the fate of the equipment and any contained chemicals in the building. Um, I think that's a, that's a material fact that will, that will, um, affect the the negotiations and needs to be discussed with both parties coming to an understanding of expectations before we approve this. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion, I, do you think before we had, was it a second, there's some input from?
Ju- just so council is clear, and I understand the motion, and it would be that they are responsible for the cost of removing the equipment, similar to what, uh, Councilmember Huck has said, the agreement as drafted is for the real property only, there is no equipment included, so that means it is their responsibility under this contract to remove the equipment. Now, if you would like us to make language consistent with what, um, Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick's motion is, that if they don't remove it, it will be a deduct from the purchase price or something along those lines, we can certainly make that change and and bring it back, but I want to be clear that this, there is no bill of sale in this agreement, it is purposeful, it is for real property only, not for the equipment inside.
Thank you, and and the, I would modify my motion, um, based on some discussion from from our city administrator, are they aware of that, Ryan, do they, do they know that they would be responsible for removal of equipment?
And actually, Rick's been the one that's been in direct contact with them, I don't know if that's been that explicit.
Yeah, I don't have a one hundred percent, or an answer with one hundred percent certainty on that.
So.
I would have to talk with them about that.
So that, I I I believe we should table this until you do have that discussion, that's, that's a material enough, um, condition, that the understanding of both parties would be good before we, before we inked a, a, a further agreement, is my feeling, and that, so that's, that's my motion, to table this until that discussion can happen.
There's a motion?
Second? Second?
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? I'll call a vote.
Councilmember.
Oh, sorry, I do have a question on discussion. Um, you said, you said, um, phase two comes back Friday?
Phase one.
Oh, phase one comes back.
Phase two hasn't begun yet, it was delayed because of the contractors being busy and because of the additional analysis of chemicals that they used over the years.
Sure, and phase, uh, phase one on the back, on the one on Macon?
Both properties, phase one on both properties will be done, should be done Friday.
Okay.
The end of this week.
So we'll have more information?
Yeah.
The next time anyways, so.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any further discussion? Then we will call for a vote, please.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
So, the motion to table has passed, we will seek some more information and clarification, make sure that our seller is aware of the associated costs implied for, for them. Thank you, Rick, for your work on this.
Sure.
Do you think it's possible by next council meeting, we'll know, we'll have the answers to all of that?
Uh, I would think so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So since that is tabled, I'm assuming that tables item number two as well?
Yes.
C two? And now, it will be time to move on to item number eleven, and that's going into an executive session, I believe you have the blue bag.
I, I do, and so I would make a motion?
Yes, please.
Um, I move that city council enter into executive sessions for the following purposes, an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations, and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four E concerning the roads, avenue agreement, and outside counsel in the Sun Canyon Four Mile Ranch Development and Golf Course.
Okay.
Second.
There has been a motion and a second to go into executive session for items eleven A and B, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Councilmember Dennehy?
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hockes?
Okay, I spoke to Ryan about this, I thought we were going to take care of it, I'm having to rescuse myself from this portion of the executive session for this project, the same project came up, I'm a member of the sanitation board of directors, we, I rescuse myself from that one here, so I'm going to rescuse myself from this one, and.
So, th- this is just the motion to go into executive session, and we, we would have the discussion on one topic, and then you could, uh, excuse yourself for the second topic.
As long as we start with the other topic, okay, because if, if we start from this one, I'm going to be walking out the door.
Yeah, well, we'll time it so you can be here for the first one, and thank you for letting us know about the conflict of interest. So, is that an a, I'm going into executive session?
And Mayor Pro Tim Hamrick?
Aye.
So we will now move into executive session and invite those in the general audience to, um, go ahead and leave, thank you for being here tonight, we sure appreciate it.